Hey, you can print your maps and then they print them on an old crappy dot matrix or something like that that you can barely see.
I didn't know if that was possible. It works fine. I completely have no reason to go that way.
Yeah, I saw that Matt pickup day was coming up.
Set back like this, or like the cheddar what?
I don't know, I didn't go by it. Forgot all about it.
Thing hasn't worked again, so it's coming up just to feed yourself. You don't wanna sit in that chair, that's what I'm saying. Oh, yeah, you're fine, there you go. You're fine.
Ready to go?
Ready to go.
All right, we will call to order Lamberton City Council regular meeting at City Hall for May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty. First thing we've got is additions or deletions to the agenda.
Great, uh, there was a slug of new complaints, so I have them on their table. We'll add the new complaints.
Anything else?
Library report was submitted, so you have that now. And then when we get down to it. Uh, the ambulance billing new contract, they did give me a new contract today, so that's.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Motion carries. Uh, consent agenda approval with the minutes for the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five City Council regular minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Or opposed? Motion carries, minutes accepted. Uh, general business, citizens complaints, we've got the. Well, that one we should probably do more by itself, huh? The Cassidy Miller.
Yeah, whatever you'd like.
Anybody got anything they wanna follow up on that? Anything we decided last month or anything? What have you got anything else on it? Uh, the one, the next one, are we gonna do all these individually, or are we just gonna talk overall, or how we wanna do it?
They don't, I can barely read the second.
Well, the second one is.
The what across from the?
The mail, the house.
That says house?
Yeah, that's what I got out of it.
I, I sort of made that out also.
Yep, okay.
But I didn't know what. That tar paper?
Taxpayer. Oh, tar paper. Oh, see, I read taxpayer.
And I have talked to them and they did remove most of the tar paper that they could off the building, off that house. I don't think it all got off, but at one point they did take some off.
How often do the streets get cleaned? Is that something that gets done?
The street sweeper? Try to go out once a month.
Once a month, okay.
In the spring, it's a little bit more, it's like trees bud at different times or whatever, but the first time we go around, we pick up the old leaves that. Blew in over the winter, then we go around again and get the sand and gravel. Then try to go once a month after that.
Okay, once a month, thank you.
We go more in the fall because of all the leaves too.
In the fall, it's a lot more, but then we're set up just for use.
And there's some, they're just horrible, like my corner is always. Full of stuff. I go out, get a shovel, throw it on my lawn. It's okay.
Right, you know.
It takes two minutes, it helps them out in between time, like that keeps the drainage down.
Right, I, I think of that, it's you're taking care of your property, like I mowed my yard, I blew the grass from the street back into my yard. So, that's me though.
Well, the second one on the, the original sheet that we had. Is actually my property.
Okay.
But it's not the property the trailer was at, so I don't know if these people were drunk or if it's that stupid.
Confused?
Well, or stupid, it's like, but I did actually go move the trailer on the other lot.
I couldn't read that one.
Then when they talk about. If they're talking about the Ash Street, then they say, well. There's no trailer there, so if they're talking about my regular one, but then they say I have another lot with junk on it. There is nothing on the Ash Street property, I mowed it twice, so. That's why I'm saying they're either drunk, so when they come become sober, I was thinking of putting the trailer there, so all of a sudden it appears, but. But anyway, so.
I feel like the junk that's there is temporary.
It's gonna be there a while. I'm not getting done with that house anytime soon, so whoever is complaining, get over it, so. So that's.
Temporary because it's. Destruction going on.
Oh, boy. But anyway, but it's the wrong address, so I don't know what. I don't understand how that person can be off a whole block, basically. But whatever. The other ones, uh. Did we hear back on the meat market, the old locker at all? We gotta get on them, cause that's actually supposed to be coming back to the city, cause they never, they never fulfilled their contract.
Never fulfilled their contract, and then when they said they wanted to give it back, they said they would pay the twenty twenty-four taxes. And they didn't pay the taxes, we were waiting for them, Matt told them, well, you pay the taxes and then we'll sign the papers, but. They haven't done that, and I'm at to the point where it's like, whatever. You know.
So, maybe we need to go certified or something, then.
Yeah, yeah.
Get it rolling, cause basically the last, I think we've kinda decided is, once we get that back to us, we're just gonna take it down.
I mean, that's my opinion, it needs to go, it's not a.
So we need to put some pressure on them to get it back, and then.
Get it done.
That's that.
The old locker on Main Street between. Uh, the old drug store.
If you look out the window, it's the one that has the hole in the side right there? Okay, okay, I think I walked past that.
We owned that as a city, we got it back, basically is a, what do you call that, a foreclosure type thing? And, uh, we tried selling it to somebody who wanted to do a art studio type thing. And they. They didn't do anything with it, so we had in the contract that they had to do something within. Eighteen months or two years, and we gave them a year extension, and they basically, the last time we talked to them, they just want us to take it back now and. Our only option is really to get rid of it, it's. It's bad.
And the, the grate is that? An us problem or them problem, and is it? I mean, I thought it's been that rusted color since we moved, ever since I've lived here, right?
That's their. That is their grate.
Because they put that grain in, and then pour up the sidewalk, put that in.
So, we should probably just let them know that.
Just today, cause it just came in today, so it's not like.
But it's not, like hazardous actually fall through it, then rotted, is it? So then maybe we need to encourage them to block it off until they replace it?
That's the one on the side, Justin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't ever walk that way, so I guess.
I've noticed it bad before, but I didn't think it was quite that bad, but. Probably get worse. Uh, any other ones we wanna talk about? This, is this, this, this other one on. Fur and Street and Fifth, that's the one that's not leased.
Which, there's, I mean, between the parking ordinance and those rules going into effect, or if you pass it. And having a police chief, between those two things, we can start.
Working on some resolutions or ordinances.
Yeah, I, it, you know.
You know, Sid, we're too involved in the golf cart, and there's quite a few that are.
You have the pellet pills.
Windows broken. So do we know what's going on with those homes, with the owners? Some of them, they do, I don't always.
We, I think that one, we've discussed.
We've tried that one, we've been working on that one for years, and they did a little bit, and then nothing, and then a little bit, and then nothing, and.
It's been about a year since he actually moved totally out, right? Or is that the?
He didn't move totally out, he just.
Comes back every once in a while.
He does come back, yeah?
Uh, doesn't he usually come back every summer?
Yeah, so it's.
Last year, now if we do the parking thing, well, then we have recourse to go through, you know, after the vehicles that are sitting there.
I just think now having somebody. In office that's able to attend to these things, that's gonna, cause we tried getting that C S O to do that.
Only got a couple done, and then it was winter.
Well, then we didn't have one, we only had, they only worked for what, a month? So we've not had. Really anybody in place to, for, to work on enforcement as much as we would like.
Okay, anybody got anything else on any of those? We will move on, then. Is anybody, is this where we do the? Anybody here to discuss anything in particular you wanna?
These guys all are.
Who, who wants to start, somebody?
Well, I guess I can start. Um, a little bit concerned about the trees. Uh, as far as the, uh. Proposal to, uh, well, Collins' private property, if a tree is hazardous, well. Every tree in town is technically hazardous depending on the wind blowing. Though, I don't have any trees in my boulevard, but the fact that. The city threatens with this proposal to come on my property and. deemed necessary to cut a tree down and, and leave my taxes, I'm a little bit perturbed about that. Now, my standing is if you want my property that bad, just offer me a fair market value and I'll leave town. Cause, and then the other thing on that flip side, as far as rape and pillage all the ash trees in town. Why isn't anybody identifying and treating those trees rather than taking them out? If you catch them before thirty percent of the foliage is gone, you can treat tree and save it. Every year. So, if it's every year, it's still better than having a thirty-year-old tree gone, and, uh. Nothing in its place, now we have stumps up and down the entire town.
Ninety bucks a tree to treat it.
Ninety dollars to treat a tree, yes.
Per year.
Per year.
For the rest of the life of the tree.
And, and homeowners are welcome to do that, if it's on their property, they're, they're welcome to do it. Us as a city, we don't think that's the best option to take, and of course, we couldn't go on your property and treat your tree anyway.
Well, no, but the fact that it's this ordinance here, you threaten to come on my property and. deem that a tree is unsafe, you can take it out. Well, I got news for this ordinance, I'm gonna leave and post my property, those guys have signs, and we'll deal with that accordingly.
I will say this, the only time that we have, that I have in the three years I've been here, that we've dealt with trees like that. Is when you have a dead tree on somebody's lawn or yard, and it's falling branches and stuff on the neighbors and stuff. Then we send a letter and say, hey, you gotta take care of this tree. So how would you say we take care of a situation like that if we don't have an ordinance like this? How do we take care of the people that don't take care of their trees?
That's why everybody has homeowner insurance. I mean, you can't micromanage everyone in town. By saying, you know, it's bad enough, you know, I agree with some of the ordinances, yeah, your grass is too tall. And all I see is dandelions, but, you know, what's next, it's to come in and take, take a tree down?
I, I think you're, you're reading something in there that's probably never gonna happen.
Well, it may never happen.
But we need to have the ordinance in case somebody just plain refuses to, to take care of a tree that. Is ultimately dead or is gonna fall on their neighbor's house, you know, and that type of stuff, and we have to have. A worst-case scenario, we have to have an ordinance to cover that. So, you're not the first one who's talked to me anyway about that exact scenario. On this tree ordinance, and like I've told them is. Just because it says we can, doesn't mean we're gonna, you know what I mean? It's, it's one of these things of, we're not gonna be out there looking to try taking trees down. Most people are gonna do the right thing themselves, if they see their tree is dead or dangerous, they're gonna take it down. But there's always that worst-case scenario where they don't, and they refuse and stuff, and we have to have a, a, a pathway. To get that tree gone, you know what I mean? So that's, that, it, it's not that we're looking to go on your property and do this. It's just, we have to have that avenue in case.
I see that as a threat to my, my property and my ownership. And, uh, well, I think the majority of us agree that, you know, I spent my working life. Paying a mortgage on a house. I went, my wife and I lived in our RV for almost ten years. Till we got a position where we could afford to pay cash for a house, and lo and behold, I settled in a little Lamberton. And worked my butt off, my house values go up, cause of the school and I, you know. Just living across the street from the school is a joy, so to hear them kids and to see that they have a brand-new school. So I don't really begrudge the seven hundred and five percent property tax increase. But when I see stuff like this coming down the pike, it says, you know, if you don't do something. We'll lean your property. Well, that already happened the first year I was here because of a water bill that was outstanding from the previous owner. And Val wasn't here then, but they imposed a lien against my property. And I talked to my attorney then, and they said, you know, that's a bogus lien. So, you know, I feel that owning a piece of property here, I, I have to fight tooth and nail just to keep it. And really, really makes for a bad environment. Should I roll into the next one, as far as the trailer parking?
Sure.
Okay, that, that disturbed me too, I have two small trailers, they're both licensed, I use both of them. Now, cause I, I got rid of my pickup trucks. And now I see the ordinance that if they're not properly screened, we could be fined. Well, I walked out my backyard and I counted beside my two. I counted four violations just within my eyesight of looking around. So that mean, you've got somebody in the wings that are building garages cheap, or. You know, I understand as far as maintaining clutter and that, but I see a lot more clutter and. Things that could be resolved and done away with here in town besides a trailer park.
Uh, same, same, same answer to that is, I think you're reading into the worst-case scenario.
Well, I agree with the, the street parking thing, I mean, that should be a no-brainer. I mean, I witnessed a RV parked in the street on Main Street for four or six months and thought. How is this possible?
And, and that's exactly why we gotta have ordinances, is because. I, I had a trailer that was complained about, that sat there for a long, long time, and I should. You're right, I should move it once in a while.
Well, I have to move the mower around, so they're, they're actually a pain in the butt when it comes to mowing.
But we've always had some kind of ordinance, so we're, we're working on these ordinances more than anything, trying to update them. We've always had some kind of ordinance, and nobody's ever bothered you about your trailers, right?
Right.
So it's probably, even with the new ordinance, nobody's probably gonna bother you about your trailer. But we have to have these in there, because there's always that scenario where eventually. We gotta do something with somebody who just refuses to do anything, there, there's those people. So again, I guess the only thing I'll say to you is. Don't get real worked up over this, because it, it doesn't mean you gotta go out and move your trailer every two days. It's, it's for the worst-case scenarios.
That are leaving their trailers parked and not mowing around them, and not cleaning their yards, and.
We got a junkyard trying to sprout up on Fifth.
Habitat for critters and who knows what else.
That's what a lot of it's about, so.
Well, you know, like I said, I'm agreeing with a lot of that, because when I walk, and I walk every day, it's like. You know, we got an attention to junkyard, so. Probably, everybody probably knows what we're talking about. Right next to the water pump.
All right, anything else? Thank you. Kim?
Yeah, I'm here for the trees too, and all the trees in the yard stuff. I was a little bit concerned about the wood pile. I've got a wood pile in my backyard, you see it when you go to mow your other property all the time, I've never seen any critters in it, but. My problem is, I, I can get like pallets. And stack them too high, so they're six inches off the ground, but that's still wood on the ground. So I don't know how you guys would expect us to get the wood off the ground by six inches. And then stack it on something like what? So I don't know what to do, or I don't know if I'd be grandfathered in to get rid of the wood that I've got, which will take me until the end of summer. And then if I get any new wood, tell me how I'm supposed to set that up. I mean, I'm not physically fit to go back there right now and go moving wood. And putting it on something, all I can do is take a few pieces every day and try to burn it.
That's probably the option.
But this, this paper says something about if you're in violent, you know, in, in violation, you only got fourteen days. Well, I know I'm not gonna be able to burn that wood in fourteen days, and that would be a waste, it's firewood. It's there for a reason, so on the weekends I can go back and build a bonfire and roast marshmallows and enjoy it. It's not there, the wood's not there, so that I can burn it all up in a matter of fourteen days. I do have tree branches, we just trimmed my trees last fall. And I didn't know how to get rid of them and didn't have a way with my van. So I said, just pull them back to the bonfire, I'll cut them up and burn them. Well, that's another thing you've got in your ordinance is, you're not supposed to save tree branches to burn. When you have a branch come down in your yard.
Well, I think if you cut it up and put it in your.
Feet long and it's laying across the, if you cut it up.
Well, that's what I'm planning on doing, I'm trying to find, I've got a saw, one of those pole saws. I'm trying to find somebody that knows how to run it, so they don't wreck it on me. And they can come over and cut that stuff up smaller, I get them all the branches and stuff going up in a matter of a couple of days. But I'm talking about the main wood pile, which is about four foot high and about seven, eight foot long.
The, and the, and I'm not picking on you, Kim, but here's the problem with your wood pile. Is your wood pile, piles been there for years, and the bottom layer of your wood pile. Is turning into exactly what we're trying to get rid of. Is those, well, they're kinda turning into part of the dirt.
See, I haven't noticed that. Down on the bottom of the pile yet.
Well, but that pile's been there for how many years?
It's been there a couple of years, cause every year I go through it.
So, that's kind of what it's about. But there again, has anybody really bothered you about that pile in general?
No, but I just wanted to go and let you know what my plan was for it, and that how it would be really difficult for me to move it. But I do have somebody coming out the second week in June. And they're gonna help me cut up all that, the tree branches and get rid of all of them. And they're gonna help me, you know, like, restack some of the wood a little bit neater in the backside. Cause people drop off wood for me and I don't even know it's there, until I go around the backside. They just kinda dump it out of their pickups and there's my free wood. So, I have to kinda keep an eye on that, but that's all I was wondering about is if I get.
Who knows? It, again, what we're mainly doing here is updating the ordinance. This, we, we've had some kind of ordinances in the past about. Keeping your yards and stuff clean, and we're cleaning these ordinances up, so it's not like we're gonna be running around looking for this. Now, hopefully, we do have a full-time police officer starting here. Shortly, I guess is the best way to put it. So, then he's hopefully gonna be starting to look for some of this stuff a little bit. But it's, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be, hopefully. A, a major thing, but we have to have these ordinances, so.
Right, well, I understand that.
There again, start at one end of your pile and.
I'm working my way through.
Get it cleaned up, that, and then you don't have to worry about it.
I've been trying to get rid of all that older wood for a while now, and start out all fresh again. But now, if I do start all fresh, it does say it needs to be six inches off the ground.
A pellet, put a pellet so that the wood is not on the ground, yeah, a pellet's made out of wood, but when you got. A tree laying there on the ground, it's sucking up moisture, this should keep it up, a pellet will blow air through there, keep that dry.
Oh, yeah, see, and I can get the pallets, I got.
I mean, you're not gonna have the bottom rule, you're gonna be touching the ground and sucking the moisture up and rotting out.
Right.
Cause it's gonna get air through there, cause it's up off the ground, yeah, we're not gonna go with a tape measure, oh, that's, that's only three and a half inches.
Well, that's what I was thinking, it might have to be like two pallets.
No, one pellet would be, just to get air going through there, so you're not, cause your bottom roll, like you said, your bottom roll is rotten out, so it's becoming part of the dirt.
Right.
So, I mean, get it up off the ground, yes, a pellet's made out of wood, but. You get air moving through there, it's gonna stay a lot drier too.
Well, when this buddy of mine comes out in the middle of June, then that's what we'll do, we'll put pallets back there. And any new wood that I get will go on the new pallet, and I will continue to burn the old wood. As long as that's okay with the city council, and I don't have to move the wood that I've gotten, put it on a pallet. If I can just finish going through the pile.
I, I would start burning it, so.
Haven't been able to burn the last two days, been too windy.
There you go. All right, anything else?
No, just that.
Why we need a three-day maximum parking?
And three-day on, I'm not, I don't.
Leaving a vehicle parked in one spot, so I guess it's just because.
While we.
Move their vehicles and again, have to have somewhere to start.
Okay, we'll have to work for a week then.
Uh, again, it, it's, first of all, it's probably gonna take somebody to complain. Before anything would happen, so it's that worst-case scenario thing again. As long as it gets moved once in a while, probably nobody is gonna bother you. Probably, that's, but it's for the worst-case scenarios, the people who park on one spot for months and months. And never move it, you know, and they, they park a camper on the street, and, and they leave it all summer long, and it sits in that one spot all summer long. Or a trailer or whatever, and it just sits there on the street for.
Days, and why can't you make it longer periods, so we don't have to break the ordinance?
I, I'm not, I can't tell you even why the three days was picked, but. It's.
Well, at the time, it was there, when we were merging ordinances, updating and merging. And when we were all discussing, we, seventy-two hours didn't. Seem that unreasonable, you know, like if somebody was going out of town, we'd just say, hey, we're going out of town, car's not gonna be moved off the street. Okay, I got company, okay, but highly, um, it, it's not often that a car is never moved. Off the street, so there, somebody's running to the store, getting gas, or going to a doctor, going to work, or, I mean, it's not. We didn't think it was that common, so that's why when we put it out there, and now we're getting. Concerns of people bringing different situations where they may have a car parked longer. It's just how it was, and we didn't think anything.
We need to think about that, changing that time period.
And then this is on the street, I mean, if you wanna put it in your driveway. We got nothing to say.
Right, what if it's in an inconvenient location, and you think you're.
Right, what if it's in an inconvenient location and you think you're justified in leaving it even? Two days, we can't do anything for at least three, I mean. There are people that could be blocking somebody's driveway that they don't think anyone is using or something like that. It just kind of gives us a recourse if we would ever have to do it, but like Lydell said. The chances of us even having to use it are very slim. But it's there to protect us and give us a little bit of a backbone for something to do in case we ever need it. That's how I looked at it anyway.
Yeah, and for me, I just. Was not aware that people would have cars parked on the street for longer in a a frequent. That wouldn't be a a random, I have visitors or I'm going on vacation or. Like we do for anything else when you go out of town and you hold your mail or whatever, right, like that's the only time I ever gave, you know, consideration till. This was put out and people reached out that said, hey, we, you know, people could use longer than seventy-two hours, but.
Anything else? Thank you. So when we do this. Tonight is when we vote on these ordinances overall, or do we already vote on them?
No, you you still have to accept them or adopt them.
So if we change something tonight, does that mean we have to wait the thirty days again, we can change it?
And you can wait till you can just vote on them if you would like, doesn't matter. We've met the requirements of publicly, you know, letting people know that they're they're up to be.
Any changes would be made would be based upon. Community feedback anyhow, so I don't know why it would, yeah, need to.
Mike, are you talking about your camper or truck or? Just anything?
And I know what you're saying, my car, there's times I get home on Friday. And I park my car and then Monday and Tuesday I take a different vehicle. And my car sits on the street in the same spot sometimes for three, four, or five days. But right, it's worst case, you know. There again, if somebody come up to me and said, hey, your car's been there for three days and I just get in and move it, but that's.
I'm just thinking like, what if somebody parks in front of the clinic? And leaves their vehicle there, or a big trailer there. Like, wouldn't it be nice if we had? Something to go tell the cop to go, you know, can you go ask them to move it? Because it's sliding in ordinance, I wouldn't want it sitting there for more than three days when we have businesses and not just the clinic, but other ones. Then three days seems like a long time.
We ran into that last year, somebody, they went to a conference and left their car on Main Street. It happened to be when we were seal coating. And we had to, you know, figure out a way to try to get them, they were coursing the cities. Find somebody that had a keys that could move the car and. Why would you leave your car in the business district for a week on the street?
Did they know that that was gonna be happening?
No, but still, why would you leave it there for five days?
Cause it's a visible spot.
Prior to the seal coating, but she had already been here and had left, they posted like the day after. They posted like two or three days earlier than when they did the work, but she'd already parked it and left.
A little more notice, I suppose, would have been.
And I guess I could see why they would, because it's a frequently trafficked area and if you have to park your car, if you're meeting somebody to ride with somebody. To me, it makes sense. Cause it's, you know, less likelihood for it to get broken too, like, so I get that piece, but.
Situations in this town where there are campers that are parked right up to the corner. And it's gonna take somebody to have an accident before it's gonna get moved.
But that has a separate. Its own separate clause.
People aren't, we're not gonna pinpoint people and say, hey, you gotta move it, you're, I mean.
Is that we've got a new police officer that's gonna be starting and need work to do.
I mean, I think that would be the least of my, I don't think he's, yeah.
I I don't know, I mean, I don't, I'm the newest kid on the block, so I don't know what kind of. Crime he's gonna be finding or dealing with or working with, so my concern is we're gonna put these ordinances in place. And all of a sudden, we're gonna have all of these violations and people getting fined that. I I don't think are really necessary because our officer is simply upholding the ordinances that we put in place. And then for us to just waive them. For for some people and and then be sticklers on others, I just, I I see it being more trouble.
I think in that case scenario, he probably wouldn't be working there very long. If his first option is always a ticket and writing everybody tickets, probably not gonna be working there very long.
Thank you.
And don't give him too much.
It's the the first, the first case scenario shouldn't be a ticket anyway. The first case scenario should be talking to the people and. Making sure they're aware that they're not supposed to be there that long and stuff. So, I'm I'm confident that he's. He's a better police officer than ever, so.
Thank you.
But, you never know.
Thank all of you for coming.
Yeah, hopefully it won't be like the last one we had. I put yard decorations up in my front yard last year and he came and said my yard looked junky and cluttered. And I needed to get rid of the junk in my front yard.
Wash machines are not yard.
And if you maybe would add real flowers instead of plastic ones in that washing machine.
Talking about, a lot of mine are plastic flowers and plastic animals and stuff like that and plant them. And he complained about it, my P C worker came out and said, well. This is her decoration, she's been working on this all summer long, my back porch. I got that all rebuilt and got all the junk off of that and made him happy and then he got on me for my front yard.
Okay, we need to move on. So discussion, that's kind of what we've been doing with the ordinances and stuff. So do we want to adopt these at this, or is that further down?
I don't have it in here anywhere, really. I was just gonna let you discuss it and if you guys wanted to adopt it or what you wanted to do.
So do we wanna make any changes?
The car thing to a week.
I was thinking five, but. Seven, so I was thinking seven, just because, oh, that's a week.
We might be gone for the. Weekend, it gives people vacation, go on road trips, it gives. And if they're parked blocking a business, if they're blocking something, then that's a completely separate ordinance, in my opinion. Or a violation.
Or maybe no parking sign. Putting up.
Yeah, so I guess.
That's one thing I did think about that I. I don't have included in here. And maybe it should be, is, you know, you guys have said different spots should be no parking. And I don't have those, like, the specific spots that have been said no parking. Maybe they should be.
They should have signs or something.
They should. Well, like, did you do out here?
I mean, that's, that's, that was the only thing I was thinking about, but if.
And I don't think, yeah, I don't think that's part of the, to do that specific in the ordinance though. That's, yeah, that's something that we just do.
I mean, so I also think of, well, my kids can park in the back and the grass that. But like we go on vacation too and the kids come home and we leave and go up north for a week. They're parked at my house for a week. Which again, what's a phone call to say, hey, we are just gonna be gone for a week?
I I have no problem making it longer than three days. There's times I'm in, I'm in violation.
And and for me, the wood, I did a lot of looking around town, there's a lot more people that have wood than I really thought about. And the more I think about it, the more I'm personally married to that one, one way or the other, because. One, I gotta fix it too, cause mine isn't up off the ground, but it's also. If it's gonna wreck anything, it's gonna wreck that whole person's personal property, so. I got one up next to my house, if it's gonna have bugs or rot the house, I guess that's a chance I'm taking on my own house, on my own property, but.
So let's do one issue at a time here, let's go back to the the parking thing on the street. Do we want to increase that from three days? If we do, then what do we want to increase it to?
I would say seven.
So. I guess the way to do that is somebody needs to make a motion on that then.
I make a motion to change the time limit. Where it's referred to as seventy-two hours in the ordinance to reflect seven days.
Which you calculated hours on that though?
We got a motion and a second, any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. By opposed? Motion carries. Anything else in the parking? One that we do wanna change? Do we want to vote on basically? Would adopting that ordinance or wanna wait?
Fine, I would make a motion to adopt the parking ordinance with the voted on change.
And I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. By opposed? Motion carries.
I just really wanna get that one in before camping season.
So now your tree one, now discussion.
I said the wood storage, I'm not married to one way or the other, I feel like that is more on a person's own personal property and is less effective. To other people. It's not like the dilapidated houses, which are probably inhabiting big. Vermin and animals and. Are at risk, you know, stuff like that. So if they want wood up next to their house, which isn't great, but hey, my husband's got my stacked, it's fine. I mean, I I don't know, I don't care. I feel like that's the least of our worries for me, but. Cause that's one we, you know, have gotten a lot of feedback on.
So is that one?
But yeah, but you, but what do you do with the people that keep it there forever and ever and ever and ever and don't use it, but some people stack it to use for the summer. Like, that's what we do, I I don't know how to differentiate between that.
Would you just get rid of number three, just the ground clearance one?
That's what I'm, yeah.
Just because then you still have it, they have to be at least three feet away from a property line, so then you're not quoting on your neighbors, but.
I would say just the ground clearance pieces, the. I don't care what other people do. But that's just me, I'm just one person.
I say we get rid of the entirety of section five. And perhaps we keep B with the debris and waste, I mean, I've. I cut down some little baby trees that were growing around my house when I first moved in and. Left them lie next to my garage over the winter, cause I was gonna cut them up and use them as kindling. But I can see where that might look bad. But if somebody's got a couple of tree limbs in their backyard and they've got bushes that block it, I don't think we should be telling people. Wh- what to do with their tree limb, they just didn't get to it yet. I I'd like to see all of five gone.
You brought yours.
I don't, we don't have the.
I didn't bring mine. The homeowners may store wood outdoors for personal use, such as where burning stones, fire pits, yada, yada. The location, it must be stored in the rear side of the yard. At least three feet from any property line and not in the boulevard or front yard, no, I think that needs to be, I don't think people should have a. Again, it's one of those worst-case scenarios. Stacking that they needs to be neatly stacked and not exceed six feet in height. And then ground clearance stored wood is elevated. Debris and waste, brush, tree limbs and yard waste, but again, if yard waste is stacked to be utilized. I, yeah, I. So maybe brush? And maybe it's more the yard waste not being stored as firewood, that's the leaves in the. Right, isn't that yard, the yard waste, leaves and grass and. I mean, cause we we've used fallen limbs as firewood.
Can I, can I have a compost bin? Like an open compost bin, put all my.
But that's contained, that's a compost bin, I don't know, that's.
You have a tree, like thick trees, you can put grass and leaves in a compost bin, but you don't put like. Limbs really in there, do you?
No, no, we won't put limbs in there, cause they're not gonna break down as much, but. Wood on the bottom of your wood pile, that's something that I would use making raised garden beds to layer it into. That's not, that's not wasteful to me, that's just letting nature take its course that I can use it.
But, yeah, I guess I.
Again, I don't foresee. The the six-inch one, I'm okay removing that or changing that. But I don't see. Anybody being bothered over all this other stuff. Unless it gets out of hand. You know, everybody has a little pile of tree branches and stuff, I shouldn't say everybody. A lot of us have a little pile that when we're mowing, we pick up sticks and throw them by a tree or something. And they either end up in the burn pit when you do have a fire or going out to the tree dump. Once every month or something like that. I don't foresee people. Being bothered with that until it's.
Comes nuisance.
Right, until it, till they overdo it, I guess is the best way to put it. So. Debris and waste. You know, I'm working on my house now, does that mean if we strike that, I can pile up a whole thing of two-by-fours or? But it says debris and waste, so what I'm saying is I'm working on my house, I've got a lot of pieces this long, does that mean I can just stack them up? And leave them for? Two years, because they're stacked neatly. That's, that's what we don't want, is what I'm thinking, so.
I'm just fine to getting rid of. And not just for personal. Do whatever, but.
Scenario is there in case somebody overdoes it, it's, and a lot of these, it's there. Cause you know.
I'll make a motion to remove section A three.
I would second that.
You got a motion and a second, any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. By opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
Can we address the question of would the property only be able to get a second opinion, I feel like they would.
Where is this now?
Oh, in the complaint section or in the request, in the RCA.
Yeah, just things that people had said to me that I just let you guys know, one of them was.
Cause I thought that was a valid question, I'd like to just put it out there.
We have anybody. Qualified to say this tree needs to go, would they be allowed a second?
So who would we have make that determination, is that you, is that you in conjunction with a call of the cats? To be like, hey, I kind of think this one is, or, but you'd be looking for super obvious signs of safety hazard, like this is dead, dead.
Something like that, it needs to be taken.
So I know that, I don't know if they're through the state or how they get certified, but there is actually certified arborists and. Around the whole state, so I guess if if you change that or want a second opinion. My suggestion would be then they have to hire a certified arborist to come in and and make that determination.
And that would be at their expense.
Or or get a certified arborist, so if they. Or or get a certified arborist, so if they have a friend who.
Because we didn't have this issue with the property. In town, that the tree had been dead for over five years. The person never moved it, well, it was starting to drop. Huge branches and the neighbor, I mean, they were dropping on the neighbor's property. And that was in ordinance one twenty six at that time, and that's what this is kind of all. Fixing or putting together.
And so like if it's your big tree in the back, that's not even anywhere near.
Your issue, that's what that was for, I mean, that tree was smoked dead, there wasn't bark left on it. And the person refused to do anything about it. So yeah, we had to go in and take it down.
Well, yeah, it's, it was littering the other neighbors.
That, I mean, that's what it was.
That makes a lot of sense.
And it's not that we're going onto people's property, it's what you can visually see from apparent, if it's. Becoming a nuisance to the neighbor, like dropping a ton of or a safety hazard, like if you look at my street, the houses are very close. If the, one of the great big trees there is a safety hazard and is between two houses, I don't wanna take care of it, I don't wanna pay for it. I got homeowners, you know, or what if I don't have homeowners? And that tree falls, too bad for you, I mean, that's kind of what it is to cover, it's not to like, we're gonna go on lawns and say, your tree's bad, cut it down.
Well, worst case scenario, there are, are a few homes in town that people just use for storage facilities. They're not inhabited. And, you know, it's like. Who cares about the yard or the trees, it's not mine, I don't have to look at it, I just come out here once every two or three months.
And so it's, it's to cover for some of that, it's not that we're gonna go looking, it's for, if there's a problem, we have some way to take care of it.
So do we wanna change?
I don't have anything I wanna change.
No, no way else.
I mean, or do we wanna change that they can get a second opinion?
I was gonna say an arborist. Are harder hazardous trees, we could add like a D or whatever, this is second opinion, second opinion can be obtained. By a certified arborist at the expense of the property owner. Within, should we give a time limit just so that it's? Cuz otherwise, you know.
Four weeks? Month, I don't know how long it takes to get them.
How much does a certified arborist cost?
No idea.
No clue.
If you're telling me that I gotta spend over two grand to cut a tree down and I don't have two grand. And I have to spend five hundred dollars to get somebody. To an arborist and I don't have that extra five hundred in my budget. Thirty days is not a lot of time to come up with the next.
And we're not telling people to cut down healthy trees. Is this, is it's dropping branches, it's dead, it's gonna be hazardous, it's gonna injure someone. If it's nearby.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's what we're telling people, would be telling people that, hey, you've gotta cut your tree down. We've already had the conversation, we've gone to you how many times, your neighbor's gone to you because it's dangerous to them and others. You just don't care, so now we're saying you have to cut it down.
And then that goes on to their property taxes, it, we assess.
Yes, it would assess it, okay.
And then, that's one thing too, I would. We'll work with people, if people say, hey, I can't get this tree down until forty five days, sixty days, whatever. If we, if you talk to us and you have a plan, we're usually really pretty good about it, I mean, unless it's like really bad and really dangerous, whatever, but. Generally, as long as you talk to us and we'll have a plan, we'll work with you, that's, that's fine, you know. Sometimes it is, is just getting the conversation started, this is the point we start at, but. And yeah, I realize getting trees done, especially if they're in the backyard stuff, it ain't cheap.
You, you always have that scenario where you you talk to the person and you talk to the person and you talk to the person. And they just don't care, there's a house on the west side of town that. It's gonna end up collapsing and and we've talked to him. Thirty times over ten years? And he don't care, he just ain't doing nothing with it, not gonna. So at some point, you just gotta have an option to.
Take care of it.
Yes. That's. Well, if you put a clause in as far as forty five days for a certified arborist to respond, I don't think that would be unreasonable, because then. You know, basically, we're talking about diseased trees, I think this is probably where it all originated from. Far as with the uh.
Disease and dead.
The ash bores and attic killing the trees. And, you know, there's some large trees on private property in town here that are dead and dying. So if you get an arborist out and go, yeah, it needs to come down, or we could treat it, at least, at least that gives your. The taxpayers and the citizens in town a, an option.
That one is on the list to come down this fall.
So does anybody wanna make a motion on that?
The second opinion part?
Yep.
I'll make a, oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to add getting a second opinion.
I will second it.
You wanna do the forty five days or the day, the day part of it, is that okay?
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
We got a motion and a second, any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By opposed? Motion carries. Anything else on that?
I do not. And if no one else does, I'd make a motion to. Approve that new ordinance with the amendments made.
I would second that.
Motion and a second, any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. By opposed? Motion carries, ordinance accepted. All right. Ambulance pay rate.
So we had talked about, you know, we got the policy in place now, but we actually have to put like, assign rates to the policies, you know, of how they're gonna get paid. So.
And this is everything we already talked about that was proposed, right?
Right, it just, we, I wanted to make sure we were good and I, you know, I gave you what last year's payroll would have been under, under the. New. View rate, it would have been slightly higher, but not astronomical.
I don't even.
So did we decide that we were gonna do a two hour? If they go out on a call, they get paid two hours if it's more or if it's less, or are we doing actual?
That's completely up to you.
Cause I, did we, I thought we talked about this, so.
I don't remember talking about that one.
We did, yeah, we did, um.
So, that's my brain.
I wanna say it was at a, it must have been a work session.
Work session and work sessions, we can't approve stuff at, right? So we talked about it, but didn't do any.
So I believe when we did that. Overall, the average is better off doing it for two hours.
It's two hour minimum and then.
It's just a flat two hours is what I have habit at.
Yeah, they're coming out ahead, but it does suck on the times they have a, you know, three, four hour calls.
Right.
Or you're doing a, if they're at a fire with you guys or they're at a big accident or, I don't know. I I was thinking for some reason it was a two hour. Like the cop, right, minimum.
This was just a flat two hours.
What do they?
We talked to, I talked to him at that one meeting about it, no one really seemed to say anything either way.
I feel like, cuz I feel like that could be a big change for them. So I feel like I would want their feedback and I don't remember. Them saying anything.
And it's hard, cuz right now. They kinda just divvy up what's left. And that's what they get, you know, so it can be a lot less than this, or it could be a lot, it depends on the year and.
I guess I would. Maybe wanna get more feedback from them before I.
Uh, that's fine, I mean.
Yeah, that's just me. Cause otherwise, all the rates, I just didn't know about the. The two hour thing is not on here, right? It has on-call rate.
I just.
Hours for run too.
Yeah, it's all I had on there, goodness, yeah.
Using the two hours.
So. How about we approve this? And. Well, or Tim, talk to them and if we need to, we'll come back and change it.
Okay. It's gonna like really upend some of them, I feel like that's a kick in the shorts.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I'd want it to be fairly similar to what they're.
Backwards on what was actually paid. Actually went backwards and it was because they, they didn't put in a full year.
And why, why are we doing, why are we doing a two hour instead of paying them for the actual hours?
Just because sometimes, like, like somebody falls and then they call the ambulance, but then they don't, they refuse transport. So you're out a half hour. Well. You just average it out, everybody gets paid two hours for.
At three in the morning. Over and over again, same person.
It's just.
Yeah, if I remember right, Tim said he didn't think it was a problem with anybody, but, but I, you know, I don't wanna think.
I, I don't, I just, I just don't remember that conversation, so.
And I remember bringing it up there and talking about what the difference was.
And it was very minimal.
Yeah, it surprisingly, right.
Overall, it's twenty five hundred a year. Overall, it increases what we're paying, if using twenty fours numbers. It's, it's increasing by twenty five hundred a year.
But that could be because we are also paying on call time, which we aren't right now. And just the, the shift in, in um base rates and meeting rates and changing all that, I mean. It's not just one change that we're making, we're making it across the board on a lot of things.
Okay.
So it's. And part of that too is the fact that. If they were to get hurt on a run. Now you can use their hourly rate of forty five or thirty dollars an hour compared to. Dollar twenty five or whatever. Cause like, I, I am dealing with it now with a fire person that had, you know, got hurt on training. And was, you know, affected by it in his personal life and got paid like twenty eight dollars. For.
Work comp.
For work comp, and it's like, well, that's not, that's not right, you know, so it's, it's stuff like that, that you're trying to. Avoid, because you know, if somebody gets hurt on a volunteer call, they should be compensated. Barely for their, their time. So, yeah.
I used to work for a work comp law firm. I, years ago. And I, I don't. All right. I'm, I'm not sure that. Us manipulating this, I mean, it, it might get them a little bit more, but if it's based off of their, their. Pay and. That was a long time ago. This not being a full-time job for them, though, I'm not sure that it, it would really play into what they get paid for work comp.
I'm not sure either how at all, you know, like, if it was. Like if they weren't able to do their nine to five job, you know, how much does it?
Right, and I don't think that the. Like their, their, their work comp attorney is gonna have to do a lot of fighting, cuz the, the insurance company isn't. The insurance company for the city, our insurance, I don't think it, it would be a real big fight for them to have to pay out on somebody else's. Other job.
Right, and they would, they would have to pay off this rate. But on how many hours, that's what it would, that would be the problem.
So do we wanna approve these, or do we want to pay bill it in late a month, or what do we wanna do?
Thank you, brother, having the conversation, I mean, I'd make a motion to approve.
I would second it.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the retention bonus for the ambulance?
We had talked about it when we did the retention or the sign-on bonuses for the. New people that we were trying to get to sign up, um, talked about offering the bonus to our existing ambulance. For retention and just. To recognize. Their service. So this. We are doing twelve hundred for EMT and seven fifty EMR is what we gave new sign-ons. Um, that one was being paid on the passing of the EMT MR test. After the first year's service and then after the second year's service, so in three installments. Um, so I just based it kinda on that same prin- principle, except for after the first, or you know, twenty twenty five payroll, twenty twenty six and then twenty twenty seven. And if you wanna do something different, that's completely fine, that's just how I.
Yeah, I thought that we approved this already too.
No, we did the new one, the new.
The add-ons.
The new ones and we didn't.
We didn't.
We didn't.
This one.
Okay.
So, Beans, you thought we already did, let me.
I make a motion to approve it, yeah. I thought we already did.
Motion and a second, any other discussions? Yep. Do with the seventeen guys sitting in the room next door, they're all EMRs.
If they were on the schedule, I'd say it was a deal. I don't think there's one fireman that says I can't go out of town this weekend because there might be a fire.
I'm just asking. Yeah. Well, and, and I would, I guess I would tell them exactly that is, if, if they sign up for the ambulance. Yeah, they get a bonus, so. Down the line, we might have to do something with fire department too, cuz they're, they're getting hard to. There's, they're getting hard to fill the rosters on those too.
I'm chatting with you outside of one of these.
So. Uh, with any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. By opposed? Motion carries. Ambulance billing new contract?
So they came up with the, the, there's changes, I guess, sent you our emails during here, um.
That the only thing they changed is waiving that startup fee?
The startup fee and the um date that it would be due will be a mutually creative fund day, which. Would be the following.
Cause they wanted the ten days.
They wanted ten days, we, well, that's not happening, that's. I think by law, we have forty five days because. You have to approve bills, so you know, to make sure you always, thirty days isn't quite enough, so I think they give us the forty five days, just so that you hit the cycle. I'm not overly thrilled with the seven percent, um, but.
So what, what was it before?
It was like twenty five dollars a bill. They just did a flat rate for, for which bill they do.
That could be a big. Some good in their pockets.
But this is seven percent of what they collect, so if they don't ever collect it. They're not getting paid. So they say, of course, it makes them more. Willing or whatever to get payments made or to get.
To go after people.
Go after people or whatever, which. Yeah. And we talked a little bit about it, I have no interest in, in becoming an ambulance billing.
You have any kind of a review? Process for contracts? Or is this, is this our review process, like, do, do we have something where every couple of years we go out and compare? Other companies, I'm asking because I do know somebody who does medical billing, but I haven't asked her if she, if her company does ambulance. I'm asking because I do know somebody who does medical billing, but I haven't asked her if she, if her company does ambulance billing. So do. Do we do that from time to time? Look at our contracts and see if there's other vendors that give us better deals?
Not usually scheduled unless we're unhappy with service or the price hike has been huge, or. That's typically what'd initiate us to go out and look.
Okay.
If everything, if, if, if we've been happy with the service and the fee's been fairly status quo. We tend to just renew them, correct? I mean, wasn't that what you guys would think?
Yeah.
That's kind of usually what we done, but if we start to become dissatisfied with service or feel like eh. Then we're gonna start looking, or there's a large price jump. Then we start looking.
But how do we know if there's a big price jump if we're not comparing like at this point?
Right, but like I'm saying, from year to year, if we're happy, if, if we agreed on, we, we, when we first started the contract with them and we're like, yeah, this is a. Typical price and. We are in this contract and they just do a, a menial. Fee bump each year or whatever that any place is gonna do, and we're happy with the service, we usually just stick with it, we don't necessarily go out looking if we're. Satisfied with the way a service is working to see if. Someone is cheaper because we had done due diligence when we, you know, initiated usually the contract to. Start it.
So they made the changes that. Val requested in here.
It was twenty eight dollars a run is what they paid before, or what we paid before.
So I'm.
And that is a bigger price jump.
I'm, I'm okay with this for now, but.
I wouldn't.
Can we look at?
I would be agreeable to looking because that is a, this to me is a fairly larger price jump. So I would like to know what other companies, if there's, how many company, other companies are there out there that do this and what do they pay?
Mm-hmm.
Or charge.
Yeah.
So how long, if we sign this, how long are we?
Well, we can give.
There's a termination.
Yeah, thirty.
Yes, thirty days to terminate, uh actually, it's ninety.
Which, you know, we're not always moving at the speed of lightning over here, so that's usually not an issue.
This, well, this agreement shall be continuous unless review or revision is requested. Request for changes must be submitted in writing in a minimum of thirty days, okay, that's just changes, so yeah, ninety days.
Why you wanna make a motion on it?
I'll make a motion to approve it with the re, the revised one.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries.
Can we put something in there to review it at a certain time? Like at the end of the year or?
I think somebody should just be really good about, just go look it up and then bring it to us, I like that idea.
Hey, hey, you know what you mentioned? Follow through, is that what I'm hearing?
And really, you know, you think about it, I should probably have a spreadsheet that talks about like. End dates for contracts, you know what I mean, I, now that we have a ton of them, it's just. It's not something I've thought about or done.
Uh, stopness rental property, storage container.
Oh, this one's just a lovely hot mess, um. It starts with my mistake back when we didn't think storage sheds needed permits. Our mistake, yeah, I mean, neither one of us. Yeah.
Okay, but if somebody building a, a treehouse in their backyard. Needs to have a permit, wouldn't somebody who's gonna have a shed need a permit?
We've already decided that you do need a permit for a shed.
Yeah.
It was just a mistake, like they're saying they.
Just a mistake.
Yeah, either one of us thought because it's movable, we didn't think you needed it. Cause you can move it.
We've, we've always done. Uh, permit, building permit that I know of for a shed, I've had two over the years or whatever, and I've bought permits for both of them, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. It's a, it's, so even that being said, though.
This is not a storage shed.
No.
This is a shipping container.
But.
It's a semi container.
Right. But technically, it is basically a shed, but the, even the fact of him, him or you or whatever. Thinking that he didn't need a permit. Doesn't mean. They don't have to follow the setbacks and, and all the other ordinances, so even the fact of. There was no permit doesn't give you the right to just put it anyplace on the property, you know? I, I didn't go by there and look at it.
I.
I was gonna, and I forgot about it and.
He hasn't responded back to you at all?
No, no, and I, I haven't done anything else because I, I need you guys to, to know about it in the direction. Of, of what to do, um.
Well, so if this letter was sent in March, ha, I mean, you haven't seen him at an EDA meeting?
We haven't had one.
I would say that we would not have approved this.
A storage shed that he asked for.
Technically, it is.
No. Call anything a storage shed. I'm gonna park my camper on my property and call it a storage, no, I know, that's not how it works.
N- no.
So the, the, here's my question with this is, it, it's kind of a mute point, but. What's the difference between this and if he just brought in a wood building that's that size?
Aesthetically?
No.
Size-wise?
Nothing, well, I said the same size though.
If, that wouldn't be, that's not the size of a storage shed.
That would have to be. Have a storage shed, shed made that size, I mean, you know, you could. Yeah, it's not gonna look like that.
But, but to me, that's not the point, the point is, is it's still gotta be. Within all the setbacks and the other ordinances in town. So I don't know the height on that thing, but what do we got? Ten, twelve foot height limit?
Under twelve foot.
It is under twelve?
You cut the axes off.
There, so it.
I would never have approved this if a permit had come through.
And that's the problem now is how to technically. Get rid of it, or.
But that's, but that's where I'm saying he asked for a storage shed. This is not a storage shed, so what you ask for and what you put, that's like saying, can I put a storage shed in? And I move a fifth wheel, large old fifth wheel camper and take the wheels off and call it a storage shed. But just cause you call it that, doesn't mean that's what it is. That's where I'm saying the name does matter.
Yeah. Yeah, technically, you know, you could call this a part of a.
It's a shipping container.
Box or a.
No, it's a.
So now, if it was, I'm just gonna ask this because you know what's coming, is they make those smaller ones like the pod, moving ones or whatever?
I would say that if, if he had approached us and said, this is a temporary thing. Because they're moving, I would be cool with a thirty to sixty.
Right, right.
Day, time, but not a permanent, if somebody moved a shipping container. Onto the yard next to my house, I would be more upset about that than their vehicles that have sat in their driveway for three years. I'd be more upset about this than cars not moving. That's what I'm saying, that's not a storage shed.
I don't know how we walk it back, is what you're saying, yeah, I don't know.
That's it.
I think we just gotta wait for Matt and Balik and go from there.
Yeah, and just.
And say, hey, you didn't ask about a shipping container, you asked about a storage shed.
If, if you're saying, if, if you're saying it's not a, a storage shed. Then quite frankly, it's, it's a violation of an ordinance, but, but. So you can just do it that way too, but the, the easiest way is to talk to Chad and hopefully. You know.
We can get a response?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you sent him that in March, he ever heard nothing?
And I guess, you know, I'm, I'm kinda waiting for Balik, just to see what the setback, you know, where are we with the setbacks, um. Yeah.
I would think he would be the same as the utility shed next to him, if that was a setback set then.
That would, um, yeah, I mean, I'm pretty sure he just lined it up with that old garage, the old garage was probably there before.
Yep.
We had the setback, so, yeah. So as of now, we'll just. Wait for the survey. And then.
And you said you have received complaints?
Yes.
Lots of complaints.
It's a shipping container.
Well, that's what they said, I heard, oh, buy a semi trailer, just cut the wheels off and put it in your backyard, mm, okay.
And then we would look at if it covers more than that thirty percent is the other side.
I thought we were getting rid of that part of the ordinance anyway, but.
Shipping containers were not.
Well, no.
I didn't think we were, I thought you had to get a variance to do that, I don't think we would get rid of that.
No.
That's the zoning side.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can get houses out in that new section on some of them lots without going over thirty percent, but.
We should be able to, the size of those lots.
They're that big?
Oh, yeah.
People be, build big houses nowadays, but. The mute point at this point, so, cause it's on the, it's still an ordinance now, so.
Try reaching out again. Don't we? Phone, email something and see what we can.
Thirty in orders.
Come two together ideally would be the best option.
Great.
Alright, well, I guess we're working on it then, so. Uh, RCA, old school parcels.
So yeah, they, they wanna separate the parcel of the bus garage shop area off. And so I re- reached out to Scott and Matt, just, cause I was like, I don't understand how you. Have to. Go by the zoning laws for the R one, cause that's what an R one, it's an R one zoning. Like downtown is commercial, so the buildings do touch and, you know, that kind of thing, so I reached out to them guys and Matt's just. Recommending not do anything with them separated as is and. Deal with it with whoever buys the next property.
Well, at minimum, shouldn't they get a zoning variance in their?
And we don't, not until we know what the new owner is going to do.
Yeah.
Cause they'll split the parcels up, but it's still zoned for what it's gonna be, so we need to know.
What is it zoned as right now?
R one.
R one residential one.
Yep. And schools as an acceptable use. And so it's school, it's property.
So there's no, there's no, nothing in the R one. Zoning that says two buildings can't be touching.
Yeah, you have the setbacks, you have, you know, the thirty feet or twelve feet or whatever, yeah. So you're not, you're not meeting the setbacks, my one other concern is just, okay. Since those doors open to the north. And they're gonna need room to get the buses in there to make sure. There's enough of a, the other, you know, the other property would have enough room to reach that middle part, cause otherwise, there's no other way to get through there. Except that way, but they're saying, just let her go, so. I feel like, I just wanna make sure you guys are okay with that before I let open the email. That's okay with us.
There's nothing for us to okay though, is there?
Well, what, what she's saying is just leave it the way it is.
Yes.
You know, cause a couple of issues that, like she just said is. You know, if somebody buys that old building and needs to get back in between the gym and. The old school building, technically, by looking at that map, you're not gonna have a driveway to get back there. Because the school is gonna keep that area to get the buses into that bus garage. So they're gonna go virtually up to that building. So technically, to get on your own property, you're not gonna have a driveway to go in there.
You'd have to go.
You'd have to go through their driveway, which may never become a problem, but.
You just have somebody drive through the front door.
It's happened before.
So I mean, and you can do it where.
So, so with that, and then the other obvious thing that I was asking was, you know, if, if they're splitting the property. Shouldn't they get a, a zoning, a variance for the zoning, because. Once you draw that line through there, neither side of that building then is set back far enough. And the, the typical thing you would do is have them come in and do a, a variance for that, so. But, so what they're saying basically is just don't worry about this stuff until. Which.
Yeah, don't worry about it until they've sold that other property and we know what the new owners are gonna do, because perhaps they.
We, but they would have to know that the minute that's sold, then they would both be in a zoning ver- violation?
You would.
Well, they'd have to, they'd have to come up with some kind of agreement.
Okay.
And, but that's on their own, don't come to cry into the city then, I, I guess that's the best way I can say this is. If this goes down this way and they actually do get it sold and stuff. Then either the school or the new property owners don't come crying to the city. Saying, well, you guys allowed this to happen, oh, you guys wanted it to happen this way.
That's why, that's the one thing, when you say it that way, that's what I would like to have the council say. You can separate the parcels, but you must allow access to.
Yes.
That back part, you know, to get through there, just because.
But why do we get to say that, right?
Well, because otherwise, we could make them come in now for a variance. And either approve it or non.
And they could say, okay, and then not do it, and then what? We don't have nothing to.
Well, then they're in a, a, a zoning violation.
Yeah.
What would you normally do?
Well, I don't know. So you're asking them to just give us a verbal agreement that the people will do this, and if they don't, then they'll be in a zoning violation?
No, I don't want a verbal agreement, I want them to know that they're not coming back to us trying, telling us we need to fix this. You guys fix it before you.
Do it.
Sell this property to somebody, make sure they either can drive across your driveway or know that they can't, is, is my point, so. I.
Okay.
But they at least have twenty feet that they can drive, you know, on that.
Like he responded, they'll make sure that they've got that, they have AutoCAD and they have tape measures and an actual bus that they can use to measure. That they have enough room to get in and out.
But will, but will be.
Why wouldn't they do it? And why are we concerned about what they're doing with their job? All we really need to be concerned about is. Once they separate the parcels. Create two new parcels, that whoever buys this one, they do their due diligence, they know what it is, or they request a variance then, when they know what they're going to. Do with that property, but like our attorney said in here, why would we make any changes to how it's zoned now? Before someone buys the property?
Yep.
So there's nothing for us to do right now, let them do what they're gonna do, they're professionals at knowing how somebody's gotta get in and out of a bus garage. And then, once they have.
The problem isn't getting in and out of the bus garage though. The problem is, is once they set up the driveway to get into the bus garage. The people who got the rest of the building are gonna not have a driveway to get to the rest of the building. That is my point, is, once they take that room to turn in the buses into that garage. They're gonna be so close to the other building that whoever buys that is not gonna have a driveway to the rest of the building. Down that way.
Not desirable for purchase.
So.
So they would have to pay to redevelop, and we would have to give permission for them to be able to redevelop.
No, but what I'm saying is, if the school wants to do this. Then just make sure you don't come back, or when they sell it to the new owner, don't come back and try getting us to fix this. You know what I mean? They either have to say, when they sell that property, you have the right to drive across. Where we're turning our buses to get into this, or they gotta stay far enough away from that other building to give them a driveway. You know, so they have to fix it, is what I'm saying, because I, I can see this scenario. Five years down the line, time passes, they haven't sold that building, somebody buys that building and starts driving across. That lot, and all of a sudden, somebody at the school, on the school board says, well, stop them from doing that. And they put up a gate or something on their property, and now these people have no access to the rest.
Well, that would have to be disclosed at sale. That, that there's access, or that they would need an easement for the access.
You would think so, right?
That's on the buyer. Or.
Yes, it, it is, but even without that scenario, then you go back to whoever buys. That section of the school. It's attached to this bus garage right now. There's a walkway type thing attached to it. And them and the school start not getting along, and all of a sudden they say, well. We want them six feet off our property line. That's how it's supposed to be. Don't come to us trying to get this fixed.
Legal nonconforming.
Yes.
That's, that's where that.
I, I just wanted.
Me is the two buildings are connected.
Yeah, right.
I'm okay leaving it and letting them do what they're trying to do. I'm totally okay with that. But as somebody who sat here for a lot of years now. A council in six, eight, ten years doesn't always know what happened in the past. So, or, or, you're right, so. I guess I want something like in the minutes or something that says. We're okay with them doing this, but it's on them to.
Make it zone compliant.
To fix these issues if they come up, because. We're just allowing them to do what they want to kind of do. But in six years or eight years, none of us may be sitting here and none of us may remember this discussion. And all of a sudden, they come in and the next council, why did the council allow that? So, we, we have wells that we've asked that question on. Why did the council allow that? And that's, that's what I don't want, is. Is in the future, so I want something at least in the minutes or something that says. That's okay, but they need to make sure they iron all this out in a contract before they sell it or however they. They do it. Don't come back to us trying to fix this.
That's what I'm saying is, my concern is, you split that down, the buildings are connected, they're both gonna be zoned R one. I'm assuming, right?
As a.
It has to be.
Well, it's probably gonna change.
Immediately, as soon as you do that, and you draw that property line in there.
Neither of them are compliant.
Now, they're both out of compliance.
They are legal nonconforming. Because those buildings were there before the change was made. They are legal nonconforming. So we don't have to make them setback. The buildings are already there before any changes were made. They are legal nonconforming.
All known, I mean.
If the building were to be, if the building were to be demolished, then they would have to rebuild according to the current standards.
Okay, is, and that's fine, as long as that's how it is.
So, a- and that building, from what I've heard, I haven't been in it, is really not in the greatest condition and would be hard to convert. Economically feasibly, um, to something else. So whoever buys that property, you know, if. If they're a developer and they want to tear the building down and put new homes up on it, that's when we can look and say, all right, now. You wanna, you, do you want to try to ask if, if you can get an easement to access your property, then you deal with that then. Or the developer will need to talk about cutting in curbs for new homes. But until we get there, there's really nothing, I, I don't think there's really anything we can do to say you can't do that. I don't think there's anything the city council could do. If I wanted to split my parcel into two, I mean. You would have to then look at, okay, anything that goes on to the separate parcel would need to follow current code. But I don't think we can, I don't think you guys can tell me, I can't split my parcel from one into two, and that's what they're doing.
We're telling you is, when you just said current code, as soon as they split that parcel, they are not in current code, which is fine.
It's legal.
I just want, I just want it noted someplace in the minute, whether we gotta make a motion or something. So that a future council knows if they come here, or if we're sitting here in three years or five years. And they come and they say, well, you guys need to do something about this. No. You guys should have done something about this, that's.
The one thing that Scott brought up was the utility connections, that sometimes when you split a parcel. But now that, that bus garage has its own, correct? And does it come off Douglas, or does it come off?
Seven.
Okay, so it's right there, it's not, it's not going across the other one. Okay, that was the only other thing I just wanted to make sure on, but, yeah.
Not sure where the gas comes in, maybe Tom knows, but our side of it, our.
We're fine.
I don't know which way the sword goes. There's no sanitary, so, so it's gotta go back to your old part. Maybe it goes down Douglas, good one Douglas.
I think it covers the Douglas.
Okay, so then, they would be.
That wasn't tied into the other ones as far as I can remember.
Our utilities are gonna be fine on, on our side of it. I mean, it's separate, it's not one coming through another building.
You know about gas, just had to keep asking.
I can find out.
And Mayor, you said it. You said it, if, as soon as that property gets split, they're noncompliant. There, there's your minutes right there.
They're not, not.
But I hear, I hear what you're saying, yeah.
It's legally nonconforming. That happens all the time where zoning changes, but buildings are already existing there, and you can't. Penalize the owners of the properties that were conforming legally before you made the change.
We call it grandfathered it.
Yeah, grandfathered exactly.
Okay, I'll get on your level with the right words. We're gonna grandfather this, yes, that is what it's called, all right.
So what was the RCA, what we were looking for or not looking for?
He's just letting us know.
Nation, and if there was anything you wanted, I wanted, you know.
Again, that's the only thing I want is that, that. They're basically gonna handle these issues down the road, not us.
Right.
Okay. Done with that one?
Done with that. Let service line replacement ordinance, so in order to go for the state. Grant money for let service line replacement, we have to have an ordinance in place stating that it is okay for us to do so. So we came up with an ordinance, um. I had Matt look at it. The one thing he wanted in there was something saying that if there was no funding, that we could assess it to the property owners, which. Make say, that's something we have always said we would not do because we are going for the state money, and I don't want to create this.
Option.
Option, and people be afraid that we're gonna do it, because that's not what the intent is on this. The intent is just to comply to the state side of it, and, um. That's that. So that's basically what it does. It says, you know, that we're allowed to go on the property to do the work, all that sort of stuff. If you don't let us go on the property to do the work. Um, then we will. Assess, or not assess it, but we'll record that to the property, so that in the future, if you sell a house, whatever else. They know that that's your problem to take care of. It's no longer the city's issue, because we tried, you didn't let us, that's your problem. So it just kind of covers us all the way around that way. Yeah, because, you know, we have to keep property owners through these, and it's before we do work on the property, you know, it's not that we can just show up and that sort of thing, it's, it's all of that, so. So my thing is, I just need permission to go ahead to do like we did with the other ordinances, publish it, publish it. Um, and then next month you would vote on it, but I just need permission to move forward with it.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll second. Okay, good.
Motion and a second, any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Motion carries. Also, we got department report. Motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. But isn't she doing a movie too, though, at the last day of school? There's something, wasn't there another movie on schedule or something? Thought there was.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Report accepted. Ambulance, did we get anything?
Um, he called me, and he wanted to let you know that there was fourteen calls last month. Three were no loads, and Wabasso covered two fire standbys. I think they were both, were they both on the day they had taken the ambulance out? Why, yeah, I know Wabasso had to cover us twice for fire callouts or whatever. So they did get the new cot installed, there was issues, so then the next day Striker had to come out and deal with it, but it's fixed, it's working, it's going. Today, we had our state inspection on the ambulance, and they passed with zero corrections needed.
How many people did they get into the one?
One.
One in the class?
Yep.
Better than none.
It's better than none, yes.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve that report?
I'll make a motion to approve the ambulance, so good.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Court accepted, fire department, Tom?
Well, I have a whole lot to my list of officers, which did not change. Was some discussion about possibly having somebody try to step up and follow along with some of the things I do and. I'll see where it goes. With that, so. Um, we're still sitting seventeen members, so. I'll leave that here with Al, just solicit the officers, and they're all the same as previous years, so. Tests, both pumps have been tested, where I, I went to and every other year. Pump testing, uh, which is company by the company that we hire, they pass with no problems. Did find a couple of minor things on tanker one, some plumbing things that. These guys fixed for me, they put in a couple of the fittings and some other stuff, so. Um, all in all, like I said, that will help, we do have an ISO that'll become an addis, so that'll help. I think we can get by with every other year with pump testing, so. Otherwise, it saves about eight hundred bucks a year, if you go, now everybody's trying to go buy an, so, with that. So. Other than that, I do not have a whole lot.
Any questions for Tom or anything?
I make a motion to approve that report.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Court accepted, thanks, Tom. Police Department.
Nothing, um, Chuck is doing the background check that we need done on the police chief.
Chuck is doing it?
Yes, he's certified to do it. So. Josh decided that he was gonna have Chuck do it. That was last week. I gave him all the information he needed, the higher, the higher packet that we had. Him fill out and everything. I gave that to him, and I haven't heard where that sits. I think that was only Thursday last week that I gave that to him. So. My hopes is by the first week or two in June, we can have him started.
And how long is Josh staying on?
He's planning on being part, not in the roster as a part time, right?
Yeah, he plans on staying on and picking up a shift, shift or two. A month.
And what are we doing with Chuck then?
Well.
That you'll have to, we'll have to.
We, once, once we get him started and stuff, then we should.
We'll revisit. See where.
Revisit the thing, because. It's better to go hourly and stuff then, and revisit all that, but we'll have to decide that basically.
Okay.
Once we get them.
Yep.
In, then we're good. And we're good.
So, really wasn't the report, right, but. Maintenance Department?
Nothing out of the ordinary, I mean. We've been working on getting the pool ready to go, putting water in that. Hopefully by Wednesday, so we shouldn't have a problem getting up and going by the June first target date. Um, otherwise, we've been working on parks, gonna do some pothole patching. In between, getting the pool ready here while we're waiting for stuff to dry and fill. We're gonna get out with the street sweeper again. We did find a few catch basins that we have to address, but. Other than that, Kim's been mowing, and she's getting the hang of it, it's. It's been interesting a little bit a couple of times, but she's doing a good job, so, we'll get there. She's gradually getting a little bit faster and faster and faster, so. Other than that.
Not that this is really your job, but since it's sort of maintenance, is there something we can do? About the, the highway out there? They came and they. Put this much in those deep holes, can we contact the county about that, or the state, or whoever we need to contact?
Fourteen?
Yes.
It's, it's bad in, on the highway out here, the cracks.
Like, as the city, can we say something to?
Well, we could, we could have Val call him and.
I can call him in Marshall and just say, your stuff you guys put in popped out, can you come back and?
I mean, it's horrible. It didn't, whatever they did, did not help at all.
Compared to right when you get to the edge of town, in town is three times as bad. I don't really understand that, but. I mean, they're, they're huge. Well, they're, some of these are pretty huge.
I can call them in now.
You know, that, that crack that goes down your right tire, on the right side of the lane is huge. And there's a couple of good potholes.
And I am on the tack board, but we don't have another meeting, I don't think, until.
But I think somebody should just call them in dot and request or tell them that it's bad, so.
I would appreciate that.
They're gonna fix it in three years.
Yeah.
Good money up your.
There's a car that'll fall in there.
I still want to note that I did go talk to Bruce at Medellin. And told him about the county intersection down here, because that's not ours. I've been trying to do more and more down there. You know, for the potholes for them guys.
We can't keep paying for that if it's the counties.
On our side, we are. I have not touched anything on an intersection, because that is, but there is, so. I have talked to people about it, so, just so you guys are aware also on that, but. I don't think Bruce has gotten anywhere with it, so.
Well, that could be a point. I had five guys in the county come out one day when I called them about all the. Ravelling in front of my house, from the buses, all the gears driving in and out of there, it's all raveled up, got nothing but dirt. Five guys come out from the county and looked at it and said, yep, got their trucks, and that was two years ago.
So, but other than that, and if you guys have anything more questions for me or. It's kind of what we've been up to, so.
Isn't Doc gonna get out this year?
Did you see where the dock was supposed to go? I had it all dug out. Did you see where the dock is?
I haven't been out there yet.
It is fuller than when I dug it out the last two times.
Okay, just thought I'd ask. I love it when I ask.
I did reach out to the DNR to see if we could boot the location of that and get it off that bend.
Okay.
Which would help tremendously.
That makes.
Now, you have to go through the wall, DNR, because there is no one, right, but.
Yeah. Yep.
I will check into that more for you.
Thanks, Justin.
Or I'm going to just haul the dock away.
What dock are you talking about?
On the Kuar.
Okay.
Yes, it, I, I, yes, I agree with you. But that's not the location it needs to be anymore, because of how we changed it with the ripples.
Yeah, which I don't think any of us really truly comprehended what that was gonna do.
Though, it's amazing. The fishing down there is phenomenal compared to what it used to be.
Really?
Yes, it is unbelievable. On each riffle. You should see the people that are down there fishing all day long.
Hector out there five thirty in the morning, not fishing.
Serious.
I don't know, I don't know why you'd eat anything that came out of there, but never. Gee, sure.
Uh, anybody got anything else for Justin? Or you got anything else, Justin?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed?
We get you guys.
Court accepted. Administration EDA.
Basically, been out most of the month, um. Subjected in the Housing Institute, so that will start in June, um. Was on a call today with Dean about. Was on a call today with Dean about, so you know, we have our sites. In this lowest lasso program, so that site finders can find us. I was on a thing today that talked a little bit about some things I can do to tweak it to help, so we'll work on that. Otherwise, that's about it.
What's the ARPA?
ARPA, that's the COVID money. That the government gave us back in fricking six years ago, that we still have to report on twice a year.
Has money been spent?
Oh, yeah, long ago.
So what are we telling, well, we still have it spent, it didn't come back yet.
And then you have, it's just. Annoying. It, that took me, that seriously took me eight hours.
You have to ask for more every time you do that?
No. Just, oh, it's boring, and if you don't, you know, do it right, then they want the money back.
Yeah, exactly right.
Oh, you got it.
We spent it already, can't cash those chips back in.
Maybe Doge will get rid of that. Well, and then this week, I'm pretty much back full time, but I probably, like, on the Tuesday. Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, I'll take longer nuns and probably go home and put my foot up and, or leg up and ice it, and then be back, but. If it gets going good, I won't, but if I do need it, that's, that's the plan at this point.
Anything else?
Nope.
You got any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By opposed?
Sorry.
Court accepted. Orders of revolutions, uh. Resolution accepting donations, resolution for lead service line application.
Yeah, we just have to have a resolution, and it says you guys are okay, that we are applying for the lead service line replacement money. And it's estimated to be costing three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And we can do both resolutions.
And then we've got. Yeah, we should be able to, and then we've got financial report and approval claims for. May?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolutions.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Just the resolution.
I have a question on, I have a question on the register.
So just, just the RCAs then, or resolutions.
No, I just had a question on the register.
Those two, we got a motion and a second, anything else on them? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By opposed? Carrie.
Who's the second? Oh, sorry. Missed that word.
Well, now we've got financial report and approval of claims.
CSO cell.
So we are allowed to shut that off for, I think it was like five months, and then it automatically kicks back on. So it kicked back on, but you guys were talking about changing the lease number. So what I was going to do, or when we get that far, is just up the lease line and just use the CSO phone. Number. Keep that going, like. For a month.
So is that a phone that, like, maybe Kim could use?
Could be, if we, I mean, if we wanted to give her one, if not, we would just.
Does she need one? I don't know, I don't know if you guys, like, communicate that way during the day, or what.
With their own phones.
Yeah, so are we doing phone reimbursement, aren't we?
No.
I have a phone from the city department, but I have a cord in my personal phone. And we've just used their own phones.
I just use my own phone, and no, I don't get reimbursed.
I like that. I like that. I use my own phone for my job. I get reimbursed, right?
I don't. I don't either, so. People don't have a toy here.
Well, and then it's my office phone, and I work for them.
Anything else?
No, that was just my question.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
By opposed? Motion carries. Mayor, council reports and communications, pool grant rejection letter, which I see it on the back.
Yeah, apparently they did make enough from the Timber Wolf sale. We did not get the Taylor Family Foundation grant, so. So that was the rejection letter.
Were you gonna connect with some? S R D C then on that? Cause what's his name had a idea if this fell through.
Yes, yeah.
Name's a loop me right now, so, but you know what I'm talking about, yep.
Thank you.
And then next meeting date is regular city council meeting, uh, ninth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty. And on that one, we can set up a work session, as we talked about going around again.
Yep.
Do everything. We'll set one up at that meetings, the work sessions are doing sometime.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.